Well, I guess we might as well.
Seven hole one.
We know that Tim is not going to be around, Vicki's not going to be around, and maybe...
Maybe David, because David's a select board member, you can't... What he can say could be his own kind of...
Ed, so... I think we'll appoint TV and Rich as voting members tonight. So, we have a continuation of the site plan from Beaumont, Connecticut. Lauren, thank you for being here. And Aaron Rich is also here. I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I've kind of been filled in on where we are. And today, I believe, Aaron, you had a meeting with Lauren and the fire marshal?
We met with them two o'clock. Two o'clock, yeah.
And I guess we're interested in finding out how that went?
I think it went well.
Okay.
Lauren's made huge progress in the items that he could make progress in, and has begun the planning process with the state fire marshal today, as well as understanding what permitting needs to still request for the additional components. But from a life safety perspective, temporary devices have been put in place at this point, both smoke and CL, to cover the occupied space. And the fire marshal and I have no issue with occupancy at this point for fire protection. And that's the temporary setup until the permanent solution comes into play with the changes in the fire panels. So, he's got good coverage. We went through all the, we went through the full checklist today, all thirty-seven items, a lot of which have completed. I'll give that to David as far as which ones have been completed and which ones are still pending permitting with the fire marshal's office.
Super. As I say, I wasn't here last week, but, uh, last meeting, but Vicki did put together some notes for that, and I think I'd like to hand that out. But what she's put together is a draft notice, uh, well, she put together a draft...
This is the action draft, completely subject to change.
...plan, which I have taken a look at and made a couple revisions to it with the help of David. And David's also filled in a lot of the dates that we weren't exactly sure which day, what the dates were. But the beginning of this document is just a findings of fact indicating kind of the history of where this application for the expansion of the facility to convert a basement exercise room into an apartment and to convert the basement storage area to a bedroom. So, as, as I think it was understood, there are some fire chief concerns. And those include, what I'm thinking, still a traffic and parking plan that's acceptable to Aaron.
Which we've talked about, Lauren, at site today.
You've talked about that, but I'm suspecting you want to actually get a hard copy of that?
Yep, yep. So, we talked to the fire marshal's office, and Lauren is going to work with me and the fire marshal, so we can have that.
Okay. And likewise, a fire protection and response plan?
Yep.
Okay, super. So, I would suggest that we would like to see those as a condition of approval. And then, there are some other items in the second paragraph of the draft proposed action by the planning board. I'm suggesting that maybe we would accept a motion to approve the application with conditions. So, I was getting that. You've got a copy, so you've probably been able to skim that through there. So, I guess the question would be, do we have some discussion on the motion? And I would suggest looking at the second to last to last page, the proposed action by the planning board. Go through this and see, you know, what has been taken care of today. Okay. And make sure, you know, then... Okay, so the first, the first, the first item actually comprises the two issues that are separated above concerning the traffic and parking plan and the fire protection and response plan. The second item is, has a number of sub items within them. One, that the new unit and bedroom may not be occupied until the state fire marshal issues a letter certifying compliance with the NFPA and RSA violations identified in this April eighth visit to the property. I presume that that's not something that you've got today?
No, that's like, no, that, we have not got that. I'm not quite sure how to answer that. Certifying compliance with all versus needing temporary. Like, right now, he's not, as of the walkthrough today, all the temporary things still walking by. But full compliance of all the fire panels and all the things he still needs to work with an architect to get, he's not going to have that.
It was my sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, from the last meeting, that we actually separated, you know, things that had to be done from things that, that the fire marshal and Aaron thought were absolutely necessary to be done. And it seems like that determination has been made. And, and that we, and that this, this actually overstates what we ended up concluding as our reference. That we, because we realized they were gonna, we couldn't meet all of the, but there were, there were some absolutely do or die things that had to be met, and we were relying on you and the fire marshal to tell us which they were and whether or not it's answered.
And that's basically what our, our visit, we tried to expedite this to do it before tonight's meeting. And the big concerns were carbon monoxide detection throughout the building, that's been remedied. Any of the combustible materials that are in spots that weren't supposed to be in have been taken away. He's dramatically improved the space around the fire pump to give much less storage. I don't know how to call that. It was your storage around the fire pump, so that's all been removed.
Interference.
Yeah. And there's a few components that just still need to be continued forward. But, like, we, we were very pleased with the visit today, in terms of what's been done.
So, and you don't feel there's any safety issues at this point?
There, if there's an issue downstairs, there's multiple detectors to provide warning to the occupants. It's not going to do the entire building, but it's going to provide the occupants in those zones that maybe there's an issue here. And far, as far as safety as well as CL.
So, I guess the question is, this, this application is just addressing the extra bedroom and the extra unit?
Correct. And those have been temporarily remedied.
And so, I guess the question is, are we really, is it necessary to give approval at this time while there are just temporary measures in place? I mean, normally, I would think that you wouldn't issue a, you know, an approval until final, until there's final completion of, of the necessary remedies.
Yeah, I know, that's probably a better question for the fire marshal.
Right.
Than this, so they are, at this point, the, I am here speaking on behalf of the visit today. They have taken over, over the plan at this point. So, they are the, the single point of authority in terms of the communications back and forth.
So, Aaron, to speak to your comment here, would it be okay to change the, the language of that first point to say something like, "All the temporary measures have been completed"? And I haven't, I haven't read through the whole thing, but perhaps there's some expectation that the fire marshal will follow up and say, yes, you get your architect in, you get all these other things that take time.
Yep.
That will be followed through. I mean, I'd like, I think I would like to approve this. I think, I'm very delighted, I'm pleased to see that you, you two have worked together to come, come to a good place. And so, I'd like to see this approved. And we need, I think we need to figure out the conditions to say that, what needs to be done. You obviously need to finish all the things to make the fire marshal happy in time. I think that, this wants to say that. Is that, is that a fair statement of your thoughts?
Well, I, I guess I'm not quite sure I'm understanding. My sense would be that we wouldn't allow occupancy until all the permanent improvements have been completed. But that, you know, we're very happy that for the units that are being, that are already occupied, that there is a, that those are viewed to be non-life threatening to the occupants. But I, I, I'm having a hard time thinking that we're going to issue occupancy on new units that are not under permanent protection. Because at this point, we're relying on some deadline out in the future for all of the issues to be completed.
Point of clarification, David, the fire marshal determines occupancy, correct?
Yeah, what they're saying, a lot, the, the board can approve the, the units conditionally, say, you can have, you can build them, you can greet them, but you cannot occupy them until the conditions are met.
My, I understood that the building official would determine occupancy. That's what the building official today confirmed. And the building official today in, in, let us, let us know that he intends to say that this is an occupiable unit in terms of his process.
And that's up to the board to decide if that's sufficient for their...
So, he said it's safe, and he has, he's willing to say it can be occupied. As long as you meet whatever the town requires. As far as the building official is concerned, he's, he is going to, in the next coming days, say it's occupiable.
So, can we change the language to ask for a letter that simply says that?
I think number one actually says that, "The new unit and bedroom may not be occupied until it issues a letter certifying compliance." I guess, this, this might be a little bit different, "Certifying compliance with all NFPA and RSA violations" signed in the report, so perhaps we want to say...
A letter certifying occupancy by the fire marshal?
Yeah.
So, it seemed reasonable?
Yeah. Because I'm not sure if the fire marshal, since the facility is built, I'm not sure the fire marshal really understands the nuance that we're involved in and that we're just looking at the new units and not the overall facility.
No, the new units were a big part of what we went through tonight.
So, David, what are you suggesting? I'm just saying that a letter certifying occupancy by the fire marshal. Okay. So, just strike the rest of that, and occupancy. If they are, the fire marshal's office is deeming it safe, then who are we?
Right, that is, right.
I think the second thing would still be, "Jermaine, the new unit and bedroom may not be occupied until the state has inspected the septic system and issued approval for operation," which I think is pretty standard.
That once you, once you install it, the state will do an inspection, issue the approval for operation. And I get a copy of that.
And then, Aaron, we included six items there.
Yeah, and I believe all of these were addressed or included in the fire marshal's report, because these were requested before. I can't remember the timing, but almost all of these are in these, in the thirty-five or thirty-six point thing. The cut sheet was a thing that the fire marshal, I believe, received when he got the apartment. So, I think that one's been completed. The architect review is now part of the fire marshal plan. So, they've essentially taken over all of these requirements. C is included in this, D is included in this. Parking spaces is something we're working on now with him, and clear signage has been requested as part of this as well. So, all this A, B, C, D, E, F are included in the one, two, thirty-seven. The only one that's arguably not is the clear signage, which Lauren and I have been talking about tonight.
We have temporary signs up now.
And so, so these, we can include these as conditions of this approval. We can approve this and say, "We can't actually occupy until these are met."
I would put it all back on this report at this point. Like, I mean, in terms of like, these, almost all of these are listed here, with the exception of the cut sheet, which probably had to be included in the permit with the fire marshal. So, the rest of this is all, they're all listed in that thirty-seven page report that you're already referencing.
Wait, the thirty...
The thirty-seven points from the state fire marshal's report from, is that April?
From April.
Yes.
But, but those weren't present, and those weren't available at that time, so I'm not, I'm missing... Has there been a resubmission since that time?
Resubmission of what?
From, from Lauren that, that has addressed these things?
These are all included in this. Basically, we have duplication here. This was prior to this, this component of what?
These, all six items are now part of the fire marshal's responsibility to make sure they get completed.
Okay.
So, I think...
It's all part of number one.
Well, it's not really part of number one, because you're not going to require that all those things are done, but the fire marshal is. So, they will be done because the fire marshal is going to, is requiring them. So, they're not conditions of approval? That's, would be what I would...
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, because...
Because if they don't have to be done prior to it, if the fire marshal is okay with...
That's like, you know, B, the, an architect's review of the existing conditions. That's some time out, you know? It's not something that, you know, it's going to be, and you want to delay, that's up to the board. But it is, because it's under the purview of the fire marshal's office now, they are going to make sure it gets done. And, and if something were to happen and Lauren couldn't, didn't perform it, the fire marshal, then is the authority that would say, "You can't be here anymore." Everybody has to get out. So, so, there's, there's high likelihood that it'll get done, or everybody's safe because they have to leave. So, so we can, so a lot of this, we can say, uh, something like, the fire marshal, it's in, all this, all the points in three are sort of in the hands of the fire marshal, and... And, you know, as this is written, "The new unit and bedroom may not be occupied until the following have been addressed to the satisfaction of the fire chief." If I understand this right, you're satisfied now?
I'm satisfied now that, after meeting with them today, that temporary solutions have been put in play to protect any occupancy. And the fire marshal is continuing to push through, like, in this bigger report, numbers one through seven, which are all tied to the fire panel, all of the rest of stuff, to make sure that this whole building becomes an integrated service in power of the fire marshal.
So, I think the number three has already been met.
Okay.
Seems like we don't need to insert ourselves into a process that Aaron and the fire marshal have.
Really, the fire marshal, I'm just here to pass along what we did today. So, there wasn't a disconnect on what occurred today, I'll say.
I mean, I, I like your analysis that, can we just strike three?
I, I think we can. I think I'd feel more comfortable if we added something to the findings of fact, also that, so that that's documented. So that we, we understand, you know, two years from now, if there's still issues here, that, this is why there are issues there, that this wasn't the town falling down, it was another party that...
And this is also not just addressing, I think the difference is, those original points were specific to that unit. What we're dealing with now is a global look at the entire structure, which is what the fire marshal's office is working on.
Okay. So, if we were to strike number three, but somehow incorporate that into another findings of fact?
If you're something to the effect that the, the fire chief and the fire marshal met on today and deemed the two new units to be occupiable.
Yeah. And is it possible to get something from the fire marshal's office?
They're writing it out, they just, they couldn't get it today. So, that's why I wanted to make sure to be here tonight, to at least convey what, what we found on site today. He's going to include a report that will document each of the thirty-seven bullet points and where, where that lies, whether permits still required. It's in the process, it's been partially completed or fully completed.
Okay.
So, it's, it's...
I would think we will have that by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, if you may ask.
So, my sense is, on, on this third page here, required application revisions to address pressure concerns, we want to strike that and say that, uh, something like, you know, that speaks to what happened today, that... Yeah, well, if we're good in identifying this, that the fire chief and the fire marshal met on site today and have, you know, reviewed the, by life safety for the new apartment and the bedroom, and have deemed that it can be occupied. And also...
So, can you, can you write that down, Dave? Please?
And also that the fire marshal is, remains in charge of any further improvements to the entire site?
Life safety, is it?
Life safety, yes.
Is that what we call it?
Yeah, planning and permitting, like, anything that, at this point, he's looking for plans to be sent by Lauren or the architect, or the builder, or the various electrical companies, or for monitoring safety, et cetera, to them, to be reviewed. So, at this point, they're, they're just waiting on permits to proceed with work.
So, we have a, a fourth item, uh, to assure that future NFPA violations do not present unsafe situation in future. An inspection will take annually, take place annually in order to assure emergency vehicle access is being maintained when they're still on the ground. And this inspection would be undertaken by the state fire marshal's office or other fire safety inspector at the applicant's expense. A lack of cooperation by the owner will be grounds for rescinding permission occupied unit that is the former exercise room and the bedroom that's the former storage area. So, again, we're just looking at the two rooms that were, um, were being asked to approve tonight. Does that sound, does that sound like something that was discussed maybe at the last meeting?
Maybe, I don't think we specifically spoke to that. But I think that's, that's good.
And I seem to recall that there was probably a suggestion, the schedule of inspections, not only to complete, but, you know, I guess, I guess I'm a little unclear about how long they were supposed to go on.
What's that, like?
The inspections.
Well, I mean, this, this makes it sound like annual inspections, I don't know. But for how long, you know?
Yeah, until, until everything's completed or forever.
Right, oh, interesting.
I mean, I would, I would have thought until everything's complete. I mean, what, what is, what is your, what is the norm, you know, for...
We do occupancy permitting, so that occurs, that we do a quick walkthrough at the inns and other, other structures do occupancy annually. It could be in conjunction with that. What I'm personally, I don't want to commit future fire chiefs to doing inspections on a consistent basis. That really is more of a planning and zoning component.
And I will tell you from, you know, for planning, you know, I know to do it and follow up on it. When I'm gone, the next person coming in, they may not, you know, catch that, and it may slide, you know? And I, I think it's kind of odious on everyone to be, you know, not setting a fixed time that it ends. Because it seems, you know, looking at that one space to make sure it's not getting cluttered on an annual basis. You know, I think you're, anything that you're doing going through, if you see it being cluttered, is going to get noted. And, you know, so I think, saying that if the fire department during one of their routine inspections finds that it is, more, that violations have been occurring, then they can bring it back to the planning board and ask to have it revoked would be a better... So, if they think that's appropriate?
Yeah, if they think that's appropriate.
You know, if it gets cluttered and you say, "Clean it up," and you clean it up, and then...
Right.
Right, that, I think, yeah. So, you, you do...
We do occupancy for, like, I threw up the schools, I had to do it for the inns in terms of restaurant capacity space, town meeting rooms, et cetera. in terms of restaurant capacity space, um, town meeting rooms, et cetera. There isn't one, you know, aware of right now that would kind of make us go do inspections down there for individual occupancy of the room. It's more tied to how many people can occupy this room, which is, it's, it's not individual rooms.
But I mean, if during one of those inspections you find some issues...
Yeah, we just, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that we would be at that building for that because there's no, there's no room that has, you know, a hundred people. If he had, if Lauren had a wedding where he had a special tent brought in that was huge and it had to have occupancy set up for that, like we've done at block line or other places, then we come to doing a special for that, but there's not, there's nothing right now, I think, that's recurring, requiring us to be there every, every calendar year.
So maybe to address this, then I think you said, until the fire marshal produces a final report that says it's all done, that, that's the end of the annual inspections?
And then it's within requirements that he, you know, the building site has to maintain those, those fire guidelines. I, I don't know what more. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm not looking to make more work for you.
No, I'm not sure of the rights. Again, this has also been transferred over, so I'm just trying to be very careful about not...
It feels comfortable to me that maybe we would just say that these need to be undertaken until all the permanent measures have been addressed.
I would agree with that. That's it.
And then, you know, after that, Lauren starts parking cars, you know, where you can't get in, then you're gonna have to address it.
Yeah, Sabo comes out very quick. Break back to the planning board and say, you know, you submitted a new parking plan, you're in violation of it in the board, because you're in violation of your site plan. And then they can revoke it.
Could we, could we change the lead of that sentence to assure that, uh, that the property avoids NFPA violations instead of presents an unsafe situation? I mean, that's just, it's close to scolding, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to change that sentence completely.
Well, to assure that the property avoids NFPA violations.
To avoid future, to avoid...
It's actually just a complete remediation, current violations. That's why we want the inspections. It's not to avoid future. Because, I mean, there is no process to avoid future.
No.
There's no routine inspection process.
Not, not in line.
Right. And, and no one can afford that anyway, so... So to assure completion of NFPA violations, inspection of the property shall take place annually?
I would say to ensure completion of the...
Remediation of NFPA.
Which is remediation of the fire marshals.
The fire marshals, because there's NFPA, there's IDC, there's, there's, it's not just NFPA that's in that, so I would just say, if you're gonna do that to maintain inspections until the fire marshal's report has been completed.
Right.
And at such a time, then if, if the town decides, look, we wanna start looking at ins or other things, they can, they can figure out how that ongoing assessment goes.
Yep.
Then you're not just doing dinner and breakfast or homeowner Connecticut. It could be dowels and lining and block line and all this, all these could be...
Okay. So do we have good words for that?
Yeah. Are you doing it to me? I'm already twenty minutes late and she's a big patient.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
I wanted to ask you a, an sureability question on the last six roads.
Tough.
Okay.
Will a, will a insurance company provide a policy on a road, for a building on a, how, a road?
If it's proven to be, well, let me, I'm not underwriting... Yeah, I'm not underwriting homeowners at this point, but I can tell you that if, if it's proven to be maintained and there's alarm systems, in a lot of cases they will. But it's, it is company by company, it's a nightmare in property insurance right now. If it's within five miles, it's a lot better of a fire station. If it's outside of that, I'm sure Lloyd's will do it. It might just cost you half the, half the price of your property.
That's, that's kind of what I thought the answer was. It's complicated.
It's complicated. But yeah, if you give us like, if you give me a tighter constraint, I can run and buy some carriers and just see to give you an idea, but...
I think the answer that Lloyd's might do it, is that a serious answer?
It, it is. I mean, I have, we have properties that I think have no business being insured, that companies will do it, but it might cost you ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
So, but really, yeah.
Hey, thank you very much for the time you spent with Lauren and with us.
No problem.
Okay. So we had a motion, I think we might wanna withdraw the motion and revise it.
What's wrong? Yeah, and, and we made a ton of amendments. David, can you maybe read it back to us?
A lot of them are just in note form.
Yeah, I know.
So, I did, I just wanted to note that Vicki had put in something from the zoning board of adjustments, that was not part of their findings, so I crossed that out.
Yes.
Just to make sure that was clear on that one. So you are going to require the traffic and parking plan and the fire protection plan from the, for the fire chief, those two items. And then you've changed the, the conditions. Basically, you're saying that the, uh, that the fire marshal and the fire chief, you're moving things up to findings and that the fire marshal and the fire chief met there today and have determined that those two areas can be occupied.
I mean, maybe the verbiage should be that the, uh, that there is sufficient compliance...
Okay.
With NFPA and RSA violations.
I, I would stay away from those.
Okay.
Because NFPA is so huge.
Sufficient supplies.
Sufficient compliance, um...
I think with the fire marshal's report.
Okay. That occupancy is approved.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And so that takes care of, um, the number three and...
Number two still...
Number one. You're gonna keep number two where the state septic needs to be, you needed approval for operation before that can be occupied. And then, um...
And then number four changes to...
Credit. To ensure that the property, uh... I have it between the two pages. I think I'm gonna need some help on that because I don't have it written down well enough.
To, to assure that current, um, violations are remediated. An inspection of the property shall take place annually in the winter. To ensure emergency vehicle access is being maintained when they're still on the ground.
Substantial inspection.
This inspection will be undertaken by the state fire marshal's office or other safety inspector at the applicant's expense. And annual inspections will continue until, um, all violations are remedied. Does that sound right?
Continue until the fire marshal states...
Determines that all violations are...
Well, our, our violations are addressed?
Yeah. Yes.
Right. Yeah.
So are you suggesting that, uh, striking the sentence, the lack of court cooperation by the owner?
Yes.
I don't, I don't feel strongly.
Does seem a little bit... ...convenient, but...
Right.
I'm fine with, uh, striking that.
I mean, these are all going to be items on the fire marshal's list, so I guess...
Right.
Right. Lack of cooperation will be addressed by the fire marshal if there is anyone struck out.
The, going back to the findings of fact, do we wanna say anything about the fire marshal being in charge of following up with compliance?
Isn't that being... I thought that was determining...
Not sure that we say that specifically, that, that...
I haven't read all the findings of fact.
I mean, it, it, it kinda tries to get there, but, uh... But we, we made that request and he accepted, right?
I think if you looked on the, on July twenty 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 five...
What date, David?
The July eighth.
Yeah, become the building official in order to assist the town.
Um, you might wanna just add some language in there saying that the, the fire marshal agreed to do so.
Well, that's on July twenty-third, the next page. Scott, we...
Oh, okay, so the request was the...
Marshall, to me, approved the town's request.
So we have to get, and that would be...
He agreed on the twenty-third.
Well, I guess, I don't feel strongly that we need to say again, but that needs to be...
Okay.
Now, do you wanna move?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I move that we accept with conditions. Okay, do we have a second? Can I ask you to just change that to...
Approved, approved.
With finding, with the, the agreed to findings and conditions.
With the agreed to findings and conditions.
And I'll...
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, guys.
Okay.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
So, uh, I guess we'll jump into the minutes. I wasn't here, so I'm gonna abstain from voting, but, um, there are a few kind of grammatical things I noticed. On the bottom of the first page, the fire alarm system is required to be secured from any resident, I, I think what we're trying to say, being able to access the panel.
Having access.
Or, or having access.
So how do you wanna change that to?
Uh, any resident having access.
Yeah. To the panel.
Instead of to have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Third paragraph on the second page on that, it says, parking spaces improved to cover the occupancy of the building to allow access to building, to the building by fire attacks.
Or will be improved.
So is that what it is? Parking spaces will be improved to cover the...
Yeah.
So we're not building a cover, well, we're... They're... To allow occupancy in the building or no?
I think it's, uh, if you, uh, so parking spaces, yeah, will be improved to cover the occupants of buildings.
To accommodate?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's what it is.
To accommodate the occupants of the building?
And then, you say, and to allow access...
And to allow, yeah.
To the building. And then the two paragraphs down there, signage needs to be installed, I think, to provide guidance for, for emergency responders to the appropriate units.
I've taken a lot of this right out of the, the written notes for making so.
Next paragraph, sorry to be so...
No, no, I'm quite happy that you are.
Makes us feel like we know what we're doing. Vicki Smith noted, so third paragraph, third line down there. He believed that the timeline was realit, was, cross out A and just, was realistic due to the complexity of the repairs? No, was unrealistic.
No, the applicant believed it was realistic.
The twenty twenty seven.
Because it was extended to twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, right.
And then I, I know it's a long sentence, but the sentence started with having the fire marshal's office agree with the recommendation. That's not really a sentence. I think, maybe it should just be an and, and a little H, having... Oh, wait. And allow for the fire marshal's office to agree with the recommendations.
Maybe that instead of the, the having that starts as a capital, really should be lowercase and like a comma or a semicolon.
And have, not fire marshal.
So, right. The app, let's see, starting at backing up a couple of lines, the applicant believed the title, it was realistic and it would see if it appears.
Requiring it.
Because it required an architect.
It's a list of things, so there shouldn't be a period in there.
Yeah.
It should be have instead of have.
All right, this is getting complicated. Let me bring it up in, in real time, just because I'm not gonna get this going, we're kind of...
So...
There it is.
Yeah. That's the...
So that's a, that is the next thing on the list. So he's, he believed the timeline was realistic due to the complexity of repairs. Corrective repairs, comma.
Right.
Requiring an architect to document current conditions.
And then recommend changes.
Changes to bring the building into compliance, comma.
Yes.
Have the fire marshal's office agree with the recommendations, comma. Then having the trades perform the work.
Yes.
So that's...
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
A simple change just makes...
Have, have, not having, have.
Yeah, no, they're all having.
They're all...
They're all requiring and...
Oh, all right.
Okay.
And then the next paragraph, Vicki Smith, like noted some items rather than noting the...
While you're one line up, change fire marshal to a capital M.
Yep.
Last line of the previous paragraph.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
So...
It's hard. I have very bad, but I capitalize too many things when I'm writing for some reason, and so I'm always like, no capitals, no capitals, no capitals. And when I need them, I don't.
And then right after the fire marshal's list were marked as completed and...
To take out the that.
Take out that, yes.
That's another thing you're doing, thatting a lot. I deleted myself.
After the comma, after completed, I'll make...
Just almost...
Period, she asked the applicant.
The break. Marked as completed, period, in lowercase, she.
And, and we're not going to do that because the fire marshal.
He's gonna see it with his own eyes.
We're actually not gonna follow up on that because.
Right, but that's what, what was said in that.
Exactly.
And we also didn't follow up on the discrepancies between the fire chief and the.
Well, I think there aren't any discrepancies there, I mean.
Right.
Last time.
Well, there are.
Stories, and we now know.
Right.
The issue about whether there's been a violation of occupancy is still out.
Let's declare victory.
So, uh, that was all I noted, but.
No, it's like there's an extra blank line.
No, you're right. Not me.
Boy, it's a great screen, Jesus.
Yeah, I wish I had that at home, but.
My brother's vision is getting worse, and instead of wearing glasses, he just gets bigger.
Big screen.
So.
Crossed up in CAD, it'd be really nice there, sort of tiny, you know, laptop.
Are there any other revisions? If not, I would accept a motion to, uh.
Remove the minutes.
As correctly.
Yes, I was just about to say that, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining. They're approved. Next item was discussion of the line, change in language of RSA six seventy four forty one. So I, as I understand, this applies to the new law that's gonna take effect on July first of twenty twenty six.
Correct.
That will allow, that will require.
Something that will need to index.
I think it is, um, they've dropped several times, and I'm not sure it's focusing.
Oh dear.
Properly has been knocked over a few times. Although, I seem to be fairly clear.
You agree?
But see, Rich is not.
Yeah.
Maybe it's an age thing.
It's one of those filters.
Yeah, one of those filters. It takes out all my aging lines. Just makes me.
Use Vaseline, I'm not, this is back in the day.
I used to use, um, Nylons in front of the camera to soften.
Really?
Yeah.
So, so David, do you want to just summarize for us? I, I mean, I guess it's written here, um, and is this all the law talks about?
Yeah, so basically, the, the law changed, um, basically, they're saying that if you want to build on a class six road, the select board must approve, um, you have to sign a waiver saying that you are not requiring services from the town. So if your house is on fire and the fire department can't get to you, that's your fire problem, not, and the same thing with medical, you know, the ambulance can't get to you. That's not the, the town's liability, um, the town has no liability to come in and plow the road, maintain the road. That's, you're taking all that on, and you need to prove that you're able to get insurance. Hence your question to Rich. To Aaron.
Yeah.
That. You know, if you, you basically need to prove that an insurance company will insure you.
And so they know.
Presumably, knowing those circumstances.
Knowing those circumstances.
Knowing the, the existence of the waiver and.
Yep, of course, it doesn't mean that, you know, you can spend fifteen thousand dollars with Lloyds of London year one and then just drop it.
Well.
Right.
Really?
Well, does, it says that you need to provide that you can get in, be insured.
Proof of insurability.
Proof of insurability.
Maybe just a letter from Lloyds of London saying.
Language, I can.
I mean, this is what David put together for the select.
Oh, I see.
And, and it said prior to the issuance of a building permit, comma, proves the lot and any buildings thereon are insurable. And then you, uh, you said or, and then it's, we're left hanging, as to what the or is.
If you go back up, I'm sorry, uh, I didn't put the, um, that was actually the change.
That was the change, okay.
If you look at the, the original one, there's an or, I, I took that language verbatim.
Yep.
And there are other, there are other things, that was just the change. Maybe something.
So somebody builds a house, or somebody applies for a, a building permit. Normally, you would issue a building.
Right.
Are you issuing the building permit in lieu of, as an agent of the select board, or?
No, I, the select board would need you to review it, I am not able to, this is specific, says that the select board.
Yeah, so is it actually the select board that's issuing the permit, or is it still you?
They may direct me as their agent to do so.
So, uh, but the whole point of the law was to circumvent governing body approval, quote unquote.
Right, you say that.
So select board approval is not necessary, it's, the applicant does not have to seek.
You do have to seek select board approval, but the select board can't deny it unless you meet the criteria of providing the waivers and proving that it's insurable.
Unless you don't meet those.
If you don't meet those, then the select board can deny it, can't.
Right, so select board approval is an automatic if you do those things.
Yes.
Because they're, they're really only looking at.
Yeah, that's their only criteria that they.
The dimensions and the frontage and whatever it is they've got to look.
Under the, under the, the rest of the law, that has to, that also applies. So let's say you have a one acre lot, but at the end of a class six road, and you're going to put a, um, thirty thousand square foot house, that wouldn't be allowed, because it.
Because, because it's the other thing.
Because.
Because there are dimensional controls where you, in the district where you are putting that.
The rule that says that, um, you have to, um, have access on a class five or better road is basically the one rule that's being circumvented.
Well. I thought it was the approval being circumvented.
Well, the, the, the select board's ability to say, no, this is not a good, you know, you're gonna put a house out at the very end of the road where it's, um, you know, absolutely horrible road, and, um, the, the select board can't look at it from a practical point of view.
They have to just look at it from, does it, does it check all the boxes?
Right.
Right, and so it's a, it's a, Dave, I don't know, I think. Pro forma.
Yeah.
Kind of approval. So. I don't know where I was going with this. That's the only. That's the only difference. So they, so I guess where it would be is that they would, they would come to you, you would say to the select board, here it is. And they would say, well, is it all okay in terms of dimensional control, blah, 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 and you'd say, yes, it is. The only hitch is the class six road, and frankly, we can't turn it down on that basis alone.
And I would tell.
As long as they do the waiver and file.
Yeah, and I would point the applicant to that, so they would, you know, hopefully have that.
And once they did that, it proved that it was filed, you would give them the permit.
Yes.
So that's.
Well, the select board would approve the building or. I, the select board are the people that actually issue, and we don't issue building permits here in line, we issue zoning permits, but, um, I think the law, the intent of the law is any type of permit for building, or a house, so it's building, zoning, you know, I don't think we can go to, uh, the, say, I'm sorry, the, the law says building permits, we issue zoning permits, so no.
You don't think we can, you know, cross that.
Well, I think you could do it, and then if somebody challenged it in court, you'd find out whether you kept or not.
Right, David gets to talk.
It's a good with Laura more.
Right.
It's a good with.
But, uh, so the select board has designated me to be the person to do that in their place. But any type of decision like this, it specifically says the select board, not the select board or they're designating.
Okay.
And, and under the zoning, the select board are the people that issue the zoning permits, or somebody they designate me. So, but because the state law, it's above that, it's specifically says it's a select board decision, and doesn't allow them to defer to me.
So, so what do you think then are the consequences of this? Or are the potential untoward consequences?
Well, the first thing I looked at is, I don't believe that the, under the, um, rules for subdivision, I don't believe that this board could approve subdivisions off of a class five road because it wouldn't meet subdivision requirements. So I think we're only looking at single family developments on individual lots on those class six roads. So I think, you know, there absolutely is the possibility that it could happen, there, but there currently is the possibility that could happen. You know, and we have, um, several instances where there are homes on class six roads.
Right, so we've already got it.
Right.
For one thing.
Yeah, and so, um, since I've been here in sixteen, almost seventeen years, um, there have been no applications to build on a class six road, so I don't know, um, I don't see this as really increasing that number. There could be, and what I tried to look at in my analysis is what were the lots off of those class six roads, and how many of them were undeveloped? That there were no, that there was no access also from a class five road. Right?
Right, but, but if somebody comes in and says, no, I don't care about a class five road, I want my house off the class six road.
I'm not sure, that wouldn't be something for the lawyers to weigh in on. So that's why I clearly set those parameters, that I'm only looking at lots that only have access off the class six. Because, you know, I didn't know how in-depth the select board wanted, these are questions we can get answered, but, um, so I looked at the number of lots off of class six roads, and then, you know, presented that to the board, it's not, um, you know, let them decide, um, what the, how hard or how much exposure the town has.
So it looks to me like I kind of added up the number of undeveloped lots that you, and I, I get, um, kind of a maximum of thirty one.
So it sounds about right.
And how many different class six roads?
Oh, there's a flock of them.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And those are all at least have one house on it?
No, they're developed local.
They all have, I think, a couple of them, I think, uh, there are no lots that aren't already developed. But I think, you know.
A couple of them.
Yeah, some of the.
There are no lots developed.
There are no lots that are undeveloped.
No lots that are undeveloped, okay.
There, there's some very short pieces of class six road that, um, there's one off of Baker Hill Road that just goes from one lot to another, and both those lots have developed, so, you know, they have driveways off of class five for better roads. So I, I doubt very much that anyone would put a house. And even if they did, it would be, it'd have to be subdivided off of the class five and.
So, but in those, in those roads, are they navigable roads, these class six roads that?
Define navigable.
I mean, with a fire truck?
No.
Okay.
Well, yeah, rush truck maybe.
Okay.
But a, currently, a, you know, the, if you have, you know, the, the tack truck that they send out first for everything.
So have there been no incidents on any of those, uh, houses?
Well, the, the.
In the last.
Where there are class six houses, they have made, the owners have maintained the road for access, and they are accessible.
To fire trucks.
To fire trucks. With the exception of winter time.
Plowing.
Plowing, we don't know, because the town doesn't take. But for the most part, where there are class, houses on class six roads, the owners maintain the roads. It's like Horton Lane, Horton Lane is a, it's actually a private road.
Where's Horton?
Off of Franklin Hill, no, I'm sorry, not, uh, uh, Ed Horton Hill, no, Franklin Hill.
It is the big Franklin Hill.
Yes, Franklin Hill, it's, it comes right up here, is the end of it, Frank, old house, it's just up off this bridge.
We keep pointing at that, is that really where it is?
Yeah, it's gonna be.
I'm, I'm just getting turned around.
Yeah, because you have that whole, the ridge that runs along.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, okay.
So it's back up, so yes, Franklin Hill, um, comes up on that ridge, and then Pinnacle is just above, right.
But you're, you're saying on your recollection, there haven't been any fires in any of those houses? That where there, where the road that they were on ended up being, uh, something that caused them damage?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is a, only a potential approach.
My, my superstition bone is tingling.
Yeah.
Like that has just called in some terrible threat.
And I mean.
We're driving home and there are.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing, you know, the, you know, to consider is if something happened out on where the roads are maintained at well enough. Let's say there was a snowstorm and one of the houses catch on fire, if Aaron calls Scott and says, hey, can you bring a, a, a truck out here? He's been a complaver.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's, there, you know, the town is not going to forsake somebody and say, hey, sorry.
Well, if plowing is, is all that's necessary, but if it's, it's not wide enough for.
Right.
This mud season.
Or it's mud season, they're not, the town's not going to bring in gravel.
And so, and so it sounds to me as if this new law simply absolves the town of liability.
Well, the town's already.
Doesn't, doesn't mean they won't try, but if they can't, you know, if they can't get there, or it takes a long time to get there, they, they don't have the liability.
And, but. That's the current rule, too.
I guess my question is, do we have waivers from all these people?
Yes.
We do, and they're all filed.
Yes.
And do we, do we track that, are we sure?
Um, I know that they've all been approved by the select board.
But is it actually reported as?
Does anybody, does anybody keep track of?
No.
I mean, I guess, I guess.
I get it, I haven't seen one since I've been here, so it's nothing I.
Because obviously, like a, like a lawsuit, you know, you really wanna be able to lay your hand on that waiver.
Have you stopped checking a couple?
No, I haven't.
Because it might be an interest, I mean, not, I'm not saying a hundred percent with you, but just go pop into the file and see if you have a waiver. Because that, that would tell you if the process had worked in the past, and whether, whether it's really something we need to get exercised about.
Well, the, the original law says the municipality neither assumes responsibility for maintenance of said class five highway nor liability for damages resulting from the use thereof. So that's.
So they don't have to have a waiver.
So they don't have to have.
So what do you mean they don't have to have a waiver, they just say that they were not aware? No, state law, state law says that the town's not liable, but. Wait, I thought they always had to have a waiver, I thought the law was written, that on a class five.
The new law.
Class, no, I think the old law was written.
The old law, I'm looking at it right here.
What does it say?
The municipality neither assumes responsibility for maintenance of said class five highway nor liability for any damages resulting from the use thereof.
And nothing more? There's no, the next sentence?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, the, the prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall produce evidence that the notice of limits of municipal liability and. that the notice of limits of the municipal liability and, or responsibility or liability have been reported with the county, so those should be on file in the county.
Should be on the deed.
So there's some, so something, that's just a declaration?
Yeah.
It's not a waiver? It's just a, it's just the municipality making a declaration?
No, the applicant is.
Yeah, the applicant has to produce evidence that notice of the limits.
Oh, his notice?
Yes, that he, so that he knows.
Okay, so I guess that's, that he was aware?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not technically a waiver, but it functions the same way?
Saying, you know, it is reported, so if everyone did everything the way they should when these were issued, then there should be up in grafting and most likely in the files here saying.
Is a, is a waiver in some way stronger than, than that? I mean, and one thinks that, that, that you're going to be, if something really bad happens, we're gonna be sued anyway. The town will be sued.
Right.
And so there will be lawyer's fees and all kinds of things that would, oh, even if, even if we insure ourselves that we win, we'd still have to pay for it.
Well, um, town, the town can recover the costs of that from the applicant.
Okay.
Or from whoever sues.
So does this law have any effect on, on what we do? I mean, it sounds to me as if.
The biggest effect is that it doesn't give the, the select board any leeway, as long as the requirements are met. And in the previous law, the planning board had a way in on.
So we.
What the, where does this leave the people who own property up, going up to that road? In other words, some, you know, some homeowner, property owner, three lots in, says, I'm gonna build my house, I'm gonna upgrade that road. I know there've been instances in Vermont where people, the, the people whose land it crosses say, no, you're not gonna upgrade that, that section of road in front of my property, 'cause I don't want you building out there.
Yeah, um, that's a good question, I don't know the answer to it, um.
Does the, does the town get into a position of forcing?
I believe that the select board, um, has the, you have to get select board permission to upgrade the road, or to maintain a road, in the class six road, if you remember Shoestrap, right?
Yeah.
They, between Maple Lane and Shoestrap, that was the class six, and they wanted to do some maintenance on it, had to get select board permission, so you would have to get select board a permission in order to upgrade that. And if the select board denied, this does not say the select board can't deny.
They can give you a building, they can, they can, they would, they are required to give you a zoning permit to build, but they can say, but just don't make the road any better.
Yeah.
So, as I understand it, the select board is looking for info from the planning board.
Yeah, the, the, I think they also just wanna make sure, sure the planning board is aware of this, um, and if there's, they had any concerns or, but, I'm not sure if they've been talking about this since I gave this to them, and I haven't had any feedback, other than they liked the report.
So you don't think any evasive action, like reclassifying ones that feasibly could be reclassified into trails, would be appropriate, or possibly ones that are, got lots of houses on it, that have lots of traffic on them, reclassifying them as class five roads and going ahead and maintaining them? Can you go to the state and actually get some funds to do, to, to help defer the cost of that?
I have no idea.
I think you, I think you can, because they.
Then they give you peanuts.
They, they just do you that?
Yeah, I think they get, give you a stipend for.
This is what the block grains.
So it's not, yeah, it's a block, isn't it?
The state in answer we're talking about.
Right.
You die, but, I started it. And then, you know, as I was talking with Rich about, um, some of the issues with reclassifying, um, he has a sugaring operation, and if he used the class six road to access a piece of property for sugaring, and the town classified it as a trail, now he no longer can access, um, for sugaring, and he loses his livelihood.
Right.
So the town, if you're going to reclassify something, you really need to, uh, spend time talking to the, the landowners, and make sure that the reclassifying of that road is not going to, um, prevent or inhibit them from doing what they normally do, or you have a piece of property out there, um, that you wanna have logged, and you now can't because you have no access to it.
Yeah, and how much does it cost to assume responsibility for, for maintaining a mile of class six road?
I have no idea what that would be, but you would have to, um.
I mean.
Bring that up to the standards of, you know, current roads with enough base, enough drainage, um, coverts. So, it could be.
I mean, I think the liability of the town is that, just the practical liability of somebody building a house, and then, um, you know, the town's sending equipment out, because we're good guys, and we don't want somebody's house to burn, or somebody's having a heart attack, and, and EMTs are trying to get there, and in the process, they damage, destroy.
Vehicle.
A vehicle, they get sustained bodily injury, whatever, um, and.
It just basically says you're, you're taking on that, um, liability of, if something happens, they can't get to you, it's not the town's, you can't turn around and sue the town.
But it's also costing the town.
Well, of course it is.
Well, you gotta give anybody.
Right, but I mean, it makes it, it makes it.
Harder to win.
Harder to win, yes, exactly.
But.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make it unwinnable, still, I, I agree.
And it doesn't, uh, shield you from any costs either, defending yourself.
You know, right, no costs, there's no one with us, but, he, he could take it, anyway, okay.
And you also have the issue that, you know, is a, you say, okay, I'm, I'm going to maintain the road, and you just consider it a long driveway, and you happily go along and maintain that, and keep it plowed, and you're good, and say, you know what? It's time to retire, I'm going to Florida, and you sell the house. Next person, you disclose that to them, and they're like, okay, fine, and they come to the town and say, I'm not fine with that, I want you to, uh, take on the road. Or you have, uh, you do, you put your house out there, way out, and there are several lots before you, and people put it out there, and then now you have, um, a large number of people coming to the town saying, we want you to take on the responsibility of this road now.
Yeah, or, or they come to you after the fact, their house is burned down, the spouse is dead.
Right.
Uh, and they wanna sue you, and they said, I bought this house, and I assumed that, uh, that I was going to have services.
It would be, have to be on the deed.
Right, and we'd have to track that too. Actually, that's interesting, does, does this new law put that restriction on the deed?
No, it doesn't, but it, it makes it required, that it's recorded in the grafting.
Yeah, but, okay, that's what I mean by recorded.
Right, yeah, so when somebody does a title search, that would come up on a title search.
Did you know? So that would be notice and the, back then it's a class six road, so if you bought the house, you had to, put it the deed.
Right, you, that would've come up, if not, then you would go after the, uh, the title search company for failure to perform.
So it, it feels to me like, from our standpoint, it, it's a lot that we would be concerned about premature and scattered development.
Yeah.
Be one of the issues.
But it hasn't happened in the last twenty years.
Well, it hasn't happened, but, um, that's because it's, it's been more difficult to get a permit.
But it sounds like a lot of these roads are just filled up with development, so it's, it's been had.
There, well, there's, I think there are two roads that have development on them.
Oh, the rest of them have nothing?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it would certainly be easier to, to research those roads and declare some of them a trail, if possible.
But again, that's something that, you know, I, I would strongly recommend that the select board talk with the landowners to make sure.
Absolutely, you'd have to, you, it would be a special case each time you did it, 'cause you'd have to know about all the lots and all the uses of the road.
Well, I, I think trails, there are a couple of different kinds of trails, and I think some of the trails, you are allowed to, to do maintenance on, on, on the trails for access to.
Class A and class B, I think, for distinction.
Yeah, and so you're allowed to do maintenance in order to access your property for logging or for.
Sugar.
Sugaring, or for any other type of agriculture, uh, enterprise.
So they, so reclassifying as a trail may, you know, a viable option in some of those cases?
Yes.
That may be a.
Maybe should.
But I think it would need to be done, uh, on a case-by-case basis, you know, looking at each road and.
Right, you'd have to do it on a case-by-case basis, but it would be something that could be done, uh, proactively and to avoid, uh, a problem.
Yeah.
The other, the other question is, could, could you, um, change the frontage requirements for class six roads?
The zoning would have to.
Could you change the zoning, so, so that it's harder?
Well, no, it's the, uh, the zoning requires, uh, frontage on a class five or better. So class six or a trail doesn't count.
Okay, so there is no zoning requirement on a class six road?
No, you're not, you're not allowed to on a class six road, other than through this, you know, if you get permission from the select board.
Okay, when you say better, you actually mean lower numbers?
Right, class, four, three, two, or one.
Exactly.
And actually, one is not going, you're not gonna build on a class one road.
Is that what you're saying?
It's a interstate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't do it that way?
Actually, the class two are also limited access, so it's.
So, um, I, I think one of the things that would be interesting, I would find interesting, is how many miles of these class six roads do we have?
Even, I didn't tell.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't add that up myself, but, um, and how does that compare to the number of, you know, what percentage of the town's total roads right now do these comprise them?
A lot of these, from looking at your report, a lot of them are like East Street, you know, it's like.
Well, that's, that's a discontinued road now, so.
Well, that's discontinued, okay, but a lot of them appear to look just like East Street.
Yeah, well, that's why I included East Street, because it's, it shows up on the tax maps, and so I included it as, but it is listed as discontinued because I didn't want people to say, oh, you missed one, yeah.
Yeah, but Goodell is a.
Goodell is.
Is one that, if somebody wanted to.
What is it, Alden is the next one out that goes up.
Upgrade that, they could, they could get their Jeep out there, and I, I kinda see two kinds of people, somebody building a hunting camp, on a hunting camp-type budget.
Yeah.
Or somebody who's able to self-insure, doesn't need a mortgage.
But it doesn't say you need to provide that, that you can get insurance, not that you don't, if you don't want it, or don't choose to have it.
Right, right, that's why I say, if you don't, I mean, most mortgage companies are gonna require you have.
Right, but even if you don't have a mortgage, it doesn't specify that you're, if you're, you only have to do it if you're going to insure it.
Right.
It, it is a requirement.
Yeah.
Because, again, who knows if the next owner.
Yeah, well, that's where, that's where that, that owner's gonna run into trouble, he says, well, I'm willing to take the chance, I can self-insure, he decides to move on, oh, lo and behold, he can't sell his house, 'cause the insurance premium is too expensive, and he's not gonna, he or she's not gonna self-insure. And so then they come to the town and say, well, you gotta fix this road, or I'll, I'll pay fifty thousand dollars to upgrade the road so that it's passable, but with one car, now you gotta take it over.
It does, it opens up a can of worms.
It's a can of worms for the select board.
Yes, you know, and currently the select board can approve lots, and, like I said, they have, um, but I think the, the bigger concern is, you know, how, these are all stuff that were on roads that weren't too bad at the time, and maintaining them. Some of these roads now are, you know, a lot older, no maintenance for many more years, we've had some very large, um, rainfalls. I mean, yesterday, my driveway got washed out because of the, the rainstorm.
You had that in the rain?
Yeah, we had that in the rain.
Yesterday you did?
Yes.
We got a quarter inch.
We had, we had a sprinkle.
Really?
The worst part is I had, um, a pallet of boxes delivered earlier in the day, sitting out in the rain.
Bagged boxes?
Yeah, it's a little, a, uh, a mini split that I had ordered.
Oh, 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 yeah. So lime only got a sprinkle yesterday?
Yeah, we only got a quarter inch.
Oh my God, I was driving north, and in Orford, I hit just a wall of water. And I said, oh, I'm sure this is going to line.
I'm still watering my plants.
It never did.
It's not enough.
No, it did knock over some of my plants.
Wow, that's too bad, that's why my lawn continues to look bad.
Uh, uh, paddleboard off the dock, like, you know, I mean, it rained for like a, an hour, and a quarter inch, that was great. And up that, I actually, where the, the pallet was sitting there, it was on some grass, all the grass was flattened by the water flowing down, uh, I say fortunately through the pallet, so it was underneath, you know, and the bottom was the outside unit of the.
We were at the stop lane, uh, on the bridge, you know, in Orford, and you could just see sheets of water going by. I mean, it was just absolutely.
All those guys were supposed to take the tent down on the common, and they ripped out, and I thought, jeez, these guys were so weak. I mean, really, it was just a sprinkle, right?
And Lebanon also got mailed hard.
Right. So we were just in the sleaze, bud?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I wasn't all that worried when I left here, you know, I was out looking to say, ah, well, those packages will be a little wet, but they're, it'll be fine, then I got home, and let's say my driveway was completely gone, so.
Oh, jeez.
Once I get the pallet up, up and uploaded, I went out with the tractor and had to rebuild my driveway.
So I guess our conclusion here is that this is not really gonna change things much for us?
Well, I think.
Unless the select board asks us to do something, I mean.
I think that it would pay for the select board to, um, look at some of the roads and think of ones that may, um, have higher potential, and, you know, do the exercise of what would happen if we changed the classification?
Yeah.
Or propose to the town, the town meeting, changing classification.
Right, I mean, that was a, that was a big deal when we changed the, uh, the road.
Yeah.
Turned that over to a trail.
And even, uh.
I mean, did we do it?
I thought we didn't do it.
No, that was Shoestrap.
River Road, not, not Shoestrap.
River, good. River, River Road has a, oh, well.
It has a trail where it was gonna fall in.
Oh, valley density.
Some sewer density, memorial bypass.
Yeah.
Memorial bypass.
Um, okay, so we have a final item here, which, um, was more work on the housing survey, and, um, folks have probably, well, everybody got something that Rich sent to them, um, I guess, um, I, I feel that, uh, that that's a, a total rewrite, and I would prefer to, if the board decides they wanna go on that route, I'd prefer to do that with other board members.
I was gonna suggest deferring this discussion, 'cause it's gonna be more than half an hour, I really, I didn't get it until late.
Right.
Didn't get it till the end of the time, at best.
I mean, I, I was out.
Oh, there you go.
Didn't get it, so.
So, I would, I would absolutely accept.
And I had done, uh, sort of a redraft of some of the stuff based upon what Vicki had suggested, and we haven't talked about those changes either.
So I missed the meeting two meetings ago, but we may have talked about something.
We didn't really.
We didn't talk about.
The whole thing was taken up with, uh, Homer in a edit.
Oh, okay.
So the, my edits are out there, undiscussed. The whole thing was taken up with, uh, in a, so the, my edits are out there, undiscussed as well.
That, if you want paper copies, I do have. I believe, yours was the seven twenty four?
I put my name on it, which was in response to.
Good job.
Can we talk about those edits now? Do you have time to do that?
Let's, let's look at it all, and then just have a whole meeting.
All right. And we're missing two important people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
I believe that, that's David who sent me, so.
And Vicki?
This way.
And town?
Yes.
Three.
Three, okay. Okay, great, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see this, cause I was going back to a June copy, and I couldn't find anything since then, so this is seven twenty four.
Yes, and I had inserted the information from the line school administration. Which I had figured out how to present as part of the information, but it was, it was data.
Great, well, I agree, I, I think we should bring this up when we have some of the other members around.
Yeah, I promise to spend some time reviewing.
So, we're, we're, I, I think we're starting to get pressed here with town meeting, even though it's just August, and.
Seven meetings away.
What's that?
Well, the end of the year is seven meetings away.
What is on the agenda for next meeting? Can it just be this?
Um, the next meeting would be zoning.
Zoning.
Zoning changes.
We alternate zoning and then housing, and zoning and housing.
I'm just, if we could get the survey out, and then just swap it around and do two in a row on zoning, and do this for the next meeting, I'm wondering.
I think that would be good, especially if we, if we have a full board.
Yes.
Or close to a full board.
Could we put together an email with the drafts, Rich's materials, this stuff, anything else, and a request for members to spend an hour or two before the next meeting? Come prepare.
Right, in fact, that would be really good, David, if you could assemble all these documents that have floated past, and, and send them, and then, you know, we don't have to print them necessarily, or we can decide whether we wanna print them on our own.
And ask people to just spend a little time, so we're.
I mean, you say all, we're just talking about a June seventeenth?
If you're already to that point, I don't think going backwards is helpful.
This is seven twenty four.
Yes, so.
Okay, was H, yeah, HQ edits of seven twenty four, okay, yeah. And then, and then we have Rich's thing of today.
Redraft, yes.
A total redraft, yeah. So. I feel like we're going backwards if we do the total redraft, and.
Well, I, I think, I think.
Carefully, yeah.
Look at them side by side, and I think that they're not that different, really.
I think there's a.
What, side by side?
What Rich wrote and this.
Probably true.
Just step back and give it some time, cause I think, I mean.
I mean, I, I, I think I understand that you can, you can fill boxes in a little easier with Rich's maybe.
I think interpretability is going to be the issue. I think that, you know, no offense, but I, I think that yours is gonna be very difficult to interpret. And I think that, I think that it's much easier to ask a specific question, that does peg them to sort of a field defined answer, because that, that's the easiest thing to interpret. You know, the open ended questions that you wanted also to include, which were in the, in the document, 2019 document, were interpreted using a word cloud. I think, I think that that's not, that, that, that actually doesn't tell you anything. There were a hundred and, hundred and forty, hundred and fifty answers.
Yeah, right.
And, and you interpret it by counting words, and stuff.
Process, actually.
But, yeah, I mean, so I don't think, I don't think that's a viable way to interpret. That's what I think it's a, then.
But that is, it is a field. It's a, it's a social sciences recognized approach to analyzing pretexts.
It may be a recognized approach, but it's clearly qualitative, it's not, it's not gonna be.
The word, word cloud is, is not the final answer.
Right.
It's a visual representation of what's happening.
Right.
There's a.
So how do you get the final?
There's a stronger qualitative approach to analyzing pretext. I mean, I'm not arguing in favor, I'm just, I'm just saying, you can't dismiss it completely.
No, you can't dismiss it completely, but you can almost, I mean, there is, there is a beauty of the self-evident.
There is, there is also a nice.
Adding up the columns and seeing.
It's a nice symmetry to looking at how attitudes have changed in five years as well.
Well, I don't doubt that they've changed, I, that's exactly what I wanna see, I wanna see about.
But, I mean, that's the problem, you have to have a baseline to understand change.
Well, actually, I'm not as interested, I, I have a qualitative idea of how things were, and I want a quantitative idea of how they are now, so, and I'm prepared to act in whatever direction the town wants me to act, you know, that's, you know, since, I don't see that we need, we have, we have the master plan, the conclusions from the survey, which talk about, you know, what it, what it said in oh six. We have, we have this, you know, this thing in 2019, you know, that gives a lot of attitudes that are a lot, very similar to what the oh six document said.
Do we have a copy of the 2019 survey, cause I, I can't, I think I was.
Yes, he gave a link to.
Oh, there's a link, okay.
The link that I gave, actually, lists the questions and all the answers.
Okay, I haven't.
I went through all.
Okay, I haven't time, time to.
So, you know, and you've been, you've been off working, right?
No, I was, I was doing.
Say yes, just say yes.
Dog agility, dog agility.
So I'd be interested, so, so maybe you should give us a talk on exactly how you analyze, take a look at the hundred and fifty answers.
Yeah.
And then you give us a talk on how exactly you get reliable data from that, I would love the earth, you know, without using AI or something like that.
So I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we.
Let's have that discussion.
Yeah, well, then, I'm just, I'm just suggesting, because I, I find it absolutely hard to believe that, that you can, that you can get actionable evidence from open ended questions.
Absolutely, I mean, you can say, I actually, I don't wanna continue this discussion today, but I believe, I, I, I'm not suggesting phrase products are the right answer, although the revised ones that I sent, I sold it at the wrong gate.
Well, the very fact that you could revise them just by fooling around with four or five words, and they completely change.
Well, no, no.
Cast tremendous doubt on the whole process.
No, 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 that's, that's what you do with statistics anyway, you clean up the data.
I got enough statistical background to know that that's not entirely true.
So, yes, so.
You always clean up data.
Yeah, now, I took out the words development and taxes because they were, they were not, actually, that's not true, this is, this is the, this is the one that we like. Lime was the biggest word, and town was a big word, and it's like, well, that doesn't tell me anything. And so I took that out, and suddenly we got to, you know, sense of community, a little character, and that definitely reflects.
Cause it, cause it was what you expected? I mean, that's not the way to do an analysis, you fool with it till you get what you expect.
So, so, you know.
The federal government's been doing that for six months now.
Well, yeah, so, okay, good. I would, it's late, let's, let's adjourn this discussion, and we'll come back, and we can go at it, but we're all fresh this time.
I'd like to hear more about it, cause I'm actually fascinated by how it's.
By the word cloud, word pods?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll send, well, you can.
Yeah, I, I'll look at the, but it just, from my programming background, just looking at it, it's, it's an interesting way of pulling stuff together.
Right, yeah.
Let's not say this is a good way to work, but it's.
Pulling it together, sure, you know, that's, that's reasonable, but making decisions and saying this is what the town supports, no, I don't think so.
There are all kinds of tools, and you don't have to use all of them, you know, putting multiple tools together, you know?
Well, if we can plan on an analysis, then we don't have to look at multiple tools, we can actually just plan on an analysis. So if you, if you prove that this is, that open ended questions is a way to our goal, I'd love to hear it.
No, I mean, it's not, it's not my favorite either, but it was something that you learned to do for, you know, all kinds of.
You focus groups, and you do, it's a, it's a, it's a great way of getting to where you should start with a real survey, it's a real science. But, you know, here, we, we can design this survey, and, and it's, and you can ask the questions that you really want the answers to.
So, good, let's, Mr. Chair.
Let's, let's adjourn.
Would you accept a motion to adjourn?
I think so. Thank you, everybody, for coming on.
It looks like it's getting cooler out.
Thank goodness.
Yes, seventies, starting next week.
What's that?
Seventies.
Oh.
Starting next week.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Say, just in time for me to get my air conditioning in.
Well, it's heating and cooling.
Though.
Yeah, it's heating and cooling.
Falling for heat, so.
It's a thirty six hundred BTU unit, so it should kick out a fair amount of either one.
Oh, good.